This meeting of the trustees of the Lamisa Independent School District is now in order. 8:00 PM on August the 10th, 2023. A forum is present with all board members present except Cindy Martinez and Melissa Vasquez. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Digest, Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Ritchie, would you please read this?
Absolutely. If you please bow your head. Just, dear Lord, thank you for all the people that came here tonight to support our students and to support our community, to support our softball team, but it also to just watch over the decisions that are made for the betterment of our students, for the betterment of our district, and for the betterment of our community. Thank you for allowing everybody to be safe during the drill we had today, and everybody was able to go home healthy. Just watch our minds. This, this room is an important room, and a lot of very important decisions about very important young people happen, happen in this room, so just watch over it, keep it inspired, and always keep it pointed towards your direction. Thank you for everything you do for us. Amen.
Amen. Do we have anybody?
No, ma'am.
We're gonna go into a moment of silence where the passing of Jennifer Jerome, mother of Lamisa ISD students. Sorry, it's Jennifer Jerome, sorry. I guess we'll do the agenda items.
Make a motion to approve that's presented?
To be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We'll do the financial report, Mr. Ritchie?
Alright, so the first item up would be the general fund by function board report. It's for July of this month, 2023. And the, this provides us with the revised budget, the year-to-date activity, and the monthly activity. And one of the things, of course, that I look at is to see what's unencumbered, what's encumbered, also look at the number of months that are, that we've gone through. So we've been through 11 months, looking at an average right now of about 1.9 million per month in actual spending. This past month, for July, we had spending of 1.2 million, or 1.1 million, $760,000. So we, we were ahead of the game based on our average, and I hope that we will in next month in the same fashion. We have encumbered $961,000, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna spend that encumbered money. I don't know what'll come out of it in the next month, but most of the time that, that's just residual from the, from the last 11 months. So it looks like a big part of that will, will fall right back into fund balance. And the unencumbered balance right now is 1.5 million dollars. We could, we could probably come out ahead nicely there for the end of the year. I expect that if we're at 1.1 this year, 1.2 for this July, it would be in a better place when we get to the end of this month, end of August. You know, if we were to come out ahead 1.4 million dollars, we'd be in a pretty, pretty good place.
That's good.
So it, it's a good report. In my opinion, it's a good report. We're 93% in expenses and our budget amount should be 92%. Little bit ahead of game, but that doesn't consider, or it does consider the encumbered amount, so we're, we're in a good place. Any questions on the general fund by function? I want to report that I, I, for me, that I haven't, we, we haven't had in our board report, it may be something we want to consider, but I use it to look at it based on what I think our net's gonna be when we incorporate the revenue with the related expenses. And our 2023 budgeted loss is 3.2 million dollars. To date through 11 months, our budgeted loss or reduction in fund balance is 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars. For this past month, for our activity, we had an unusual month because of the expenses being so well and the revenue being actually mostly from federal money, but we did have a, a drawdown or a deposit for federal, for state funds. And we came out ahead 117,919. Our revenue for July, based on income and expense, was ahead of the game. We picked up 117,000 dollars in additional fund balance because of that. So, so that, to me, that's a good indicator that we're, we're operating properly. We're gonna see trends through revenue and expense based on when the money comes in and when the money goes out, and this, it's, to me, it's kind of unusual to see one, we haven't seen this. It's kind of unusual to see a point where we're, we're making a little bit, little bit profit. And that's part of, part of it because we're at, also at close to year-end, the summer does, does slow down. The unencumbered, like I said, is, is included in the, has the encumbered included in it, so we're like, again, that, that 961,000 dollars is encumbered. If we don't use that, it's gonna go back into the fund balance. If we don't use what we, what we budgeted, it's gonna go back into the fund balance. So those are all good things. I think we're gonna come out in a really good place by the end of the, by the end of the, of this month. Next sheet is the revenue year to date board report, also dated for July. And if you look at the revised budget and look at the year-to-date amount, you'll see that we are on mark for revenue, for local revenue. We're at 91.88%, 92 is the 1112. We, that's, a lot of that's revenue from our property taxes, and I don't look for us to receive that much in August. It really slows down June, July. So I think we're close to where we're, we're gonna be for the year-end. I don't think we're gonna collect that much money in that. The state program, we're gonna collect probably another, we'll have another amount, which is a scheduled amount based on what we have from our ADA, and I think we'll see about the same amount we saw, that we saw in July. We'll see that in, we'll see that in August. And also, that is based on a higher ADA than what we're gonna see in the next year. And that's it for the, the revenue report. Any questions? The, the next item is the monkey capital outlay for, for also 731. There's, there's only two items on there. Totaling $2,365, two items. The next page is also the monkey capital outlay report, and it just shows you which fund that money came out of. It came out of the general fund on the 19th. And that's it for the capital report. If y'all have any questions about that? Now, the next, the next report is the Lamisa Board Monkey Check Ration, dated also 731. And I, I go through this probably just like y'all are, just looking for items that are unusual or items that I'm not aware of. It's a, it's a small month. There's not a lot of stuff on there. The only, only really, there weren't any marks, big items that caught my eye. There was some money spent for some, for mind play, for curriculum, and, but that's not unusual. That's our annual fee for the next year. We, we typically see, see that item in there. So nothing caught my eye in the check ratio, but if y'all see anything you want to ask me about, I'd be glad to answer your questions. And that's it. So after the report, there are no other items on the report. No donations, no over $50,000.
I do have one question. Oh, no, I mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
Last meeting, he told us that, of course, we started the year out expecting a deficit of 3.3 million for the year budget. And last month, he told us that, that that was looking like, you know, we were gonna be more than that. Well, come out to the good, about a good 250,000 to 500,000, somewhere in there. From my understanding, you're right. That's looking even better now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I was kind of getting at.
If you think about it, if we were to do a 1.5 million dollars in expenditures for, for the month, which would, is no, could be normal. I mean, we could do that. And we don't touch that money that's encumbered, because, and if we do, it's gonna be very small. There's nothing big out there in encumbered that's gonna impact that line item. So if we do the 1.5 million dollars in expense and we collect less than that for revenue, we're gonna still be ahead of the game, but my point is, is that, that the biggest part of that encumbered will go back into fund balance, then that's, you know, 800,000 dollars that would end up back in fund balance.
So basically, we've, basically, you've gone from looking at the 3.3 million dollar, 3.3, 3.4 million dollar hole, to last month, it was 2.6, 2.7, and we're looking at maybe even being better than that?
Yes, we are. And I'd like to say that just, you know, that's, that's a culture, and that's a culture that, to, to save money and to be cautious with their spending. I think that that's already an effect on the district because of talk and communication about Esther's gone. Mr. Ritchie talks about that as much as anybody. Too long. But what we, we both are, and that's the, so I think it's just that, I think that we're gearing up to, to have a good year based on what we budget. You know, everybody, everybody that I've, I've talked to about it wants to, wants to beat the number. You know, they want, you know, they want to do, they want to do things right. And we're getting the cooperation from all departments in terms of gas control for the pumps, at the smallest that might seem. Everything has value in, in our electricity that Ritchie's been working on. So there's a lot of things that can help us out more so this year than it has in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done with that electricity study already?
No, he's still, still working on it. We got some of those meters disconnected, though. We've already had that happen, and now he's monitoring some of the other, the other stuff to see if there's more we can do.
Make a motion to approve that's presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now we're going to administrative reports.
Okay, let's, let's celebrate a little. I'm gonna pull this podium to the side. Put your hands, move away, start walking. Guys, every now and then a team comes around. We, all the teams in Lamisa are special. Every now and then a team comes through that just is extra special. The softball team sitting in front of me and your, and your families were that this past season. Not only did y'all create one of, in my opinion, one of the most awesome days in Lamisa sports history, hosting that game in front of how many thousands of people? Anybody remember? There was a lot of boy weather because we was having a crowd controller. But even prior to that, just the joy of getting to watch y'all compete, it was, we were blessed as a community. We were fortunate. I know I played, and it's fortunate, and you're blessed to get to play the game, but to watch this softball team play, it was, I felt lucky. I did. I felt lucky to get to go out and watch y'all play every week. Fun what you pitch. Sad, I can't leave you graduating feeling like you've been in high school for 17 years, but you're finally going. And I want to talk about Coach Hernandez real quick, because I've known Coach Hernandez a really long time, because we're both old people. And I just have so much, I've got a lot of respect from her, and I met her when I was a coach and she was a coach, and I love the way she modeled her program, and I think that if young coaches would model their programs after the way she does it, because she doesn't just teach them how to play the sport, she teaches them how to be great young ladies. She's all about character every bit as much as she is about winning, but she proves the point that I always say, if you bind to the vision of everything she builds, what does it result in? Winning. And y'all, this team was the winningest one that we had here. So thank y'all so much for what you did. Now, we have some certificates, but I want you to get to come up and talk about your team a little bit. I'm gonna get your husband to come up as well, if he's here. No, I'm Coach Benitez, I guess. You'll hand these out. Coach Benitez, you'll come on. What I'd like to do is get him called up here after Coach Hernandez talks about him, but then we're not leaving here without getting a picture with our school board for the newspaper. But guys, just take a minute and celebrate yourselves. We've been really quiet since y'all been here. It's felt like the library since y'all walked in the room. Y'all can loosen up now, right? They say your name, clap for them, hoop and holler for them, because that is our.
You want me to do this?
You gotta talk about that.
No, I know we walked in and we were kind of chuckling because we haven't seen each other in a while, and so they were, we're all excited. I know my kids had to give hugs to everybody. This group was, like, as he said before, is a special group. Talented, obviously, but a great group of young ladies. And I think one of the big things that they were able to prove was that it was more than just the game. It was in the classroom. It was outside of how we carried ourselves. And you've got a lot of the little ones that are here, and I know especially, specifically speaking, my kid, you know, she wants to play. She wants, oh, I don't know what I, I want to be a catcher. I want to be a pitcher, but it's all because she wants to model what she sees. And I hope that, that's something that you never forget, is that the imprint that you left. You'll always be a part of this program. You left your spot there and your mark, and it's always gonna be because of what you did. Seniors, I've told you this before, y'all go out and conquer the world. Chase your dreams. There's no dream that's too big. Go out and shine and always remember where you come from. So with that being said, Amaya? And Leila? Sanchez?
Then I'm gonna get these guys to come join.
Em? Mel? Zo? Hey, hey? Aleah? Priscilla?
We'll get your coaches up here, too. They have one in there, too. So what I'd like to do, guys, and get your phones down. Let's get the coaches with them and get some pictures, and then board members, if you wouldn't mind coming around, I think this would be a great time for just commemorating something special that happened in Lamisa. Snap away.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna get one handed. We're gonna get. Alright, we good? Alright, school board members, let's fill in the.
Ah, yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry.
Guys, let's give them one more round of applause. Y'all, families, y'all are welcome to stick around for the rest of this exciting meeting. Y'all, if you're going to vote, you better vote right now. When I start talking again, I'll lock the door. You'll be stuck. Thank you all so much for being here. It is. Oh, for sure, yes, sir. We'll let them get out of here and hook up on to them. Guys, this is great.
Thank y'all.
Y'all gonna be famous. It was really good to see some of those seniors. I had seniors since graduating. It was good to see them.
How many of them are still playing ball?
I think, I think it's pretty much continued. Alila is, Alaya wasn't going, but she started to think she might, she might try to go. And then Eternity wasn't here. Alright, put your names. Is it okay, board members, if I bump the, the drill up to talk about while our principals are here?
Yes.
Because they were here for it, and I asked Officer Boyd to kind of listen as well because he played a huge role in it today. And then I'll introduce our principals, but I was very, very pleased with how it went. And we knew there was gonna be a lot of things we got to fix, not just us, the PD, the EMS. We, we timed it. We filmed it. The, all of the PD had their, their body cams on. Coach Hernandez's husband, Jeremy, he had his GoPro so we could see. We knew, we knew where it was going to take place at. Our staff did not. And so, and it, we had met a lot about it. It did make, it, it was, it was heavy. I kept using the word heavy. It was a lot heavier for some of our staff members than they thought it was going to be. They had the opportunity to not participate, and we had three out of 300, which, they're the three that I would have called to tell them they don't need to, because I knew of stuff that they didn't need to be there. But even during the drill today, and it was almost like two different worlds. If you were upstairs, it happened upstairs. If you were upstairs, you heard the gunshots. If you were in two rooms, you were, you experienced the full effect of what we did. If you were downstairs, you heard gunshots, but you were a little more removed. If you were in the science labs, you, you might not have known anything was ever happening, but I think that's realistic, because we've all seen the news conferences, and there's, there's people that stay in lockdown for, for hours because they don't know when to come out or how to come out. Some of the things I was really proud of, I told our people, I'm not coaching you. I want a, I want genuine reactions, because we, we can't change it if, if, if we're coaching you. We, I want to see what you do. So our shooter goes in the first room and immediately shoots one employee, and he does not stay in that room very long. He shoots off three. We had pre-made victims, so our EMS people knew who to go to. Then he goes into a second room, and that's the room he stays in. And I was standing outside of it, and I'm not gonna lie, even I, I'm, I mean, I'm pretty much a non-emotional person, but it would get really quiet for about three minutes, and then you would hear three more gunshots. And in my head, I'm sitting here thinking, if this was real, because this is while we're waiting, we're waiting. If this was real, that's, that's, that's three students, three lives, right? And it, it registered, and I was really proud of this man. Other than this, I, I would say this, you gotta get in shape. He was beating. You earned, did you, no, like, no, like, he, but, but he and Flores were the first two to respond, because we really want, that's why we have those SROs. Yes, we have the cavalry coming, but we have them there to protect the immediate, and, and their, their job is to go to the threat, and that's what they did. They went straight to the threat. By the time they got upstairs, the gunshots had kind of stopped, so they're trying to clear rooms. They don't know where it's at, and we're not telling them. We're watching. And then they hear two more gunshots, and immediately they go react to this one. And he and Flores were the first two to get in the room, and I believe before the PD got there, y'all had neutralized the victim.
Yes, sir.
And at that point, it became almost a rescue mission. Of course, did they know there was any more shooters? There could have been another shooter somewhere. So they had to begin checking the rooms upstairs, and then the EMS showed up, and our injuries, we had put lanyards around them, and it said, like gunshot wound to chest, and it had vitals underneath them, so when our people got there, they knew what to treat. Left femur broke. And we transported, I believe, four to Medical Arts. We had two that were passed away immediately. And that's a tough thing, and I met with them again yesterday, and I told them, guys, make sure you're good with this, because I know it's all fun and games until tomorrow, you're gonna have a gunshot, and you're, you're, and one of them did call me last night and said, I, I think you're right. And so I had someone else sub-informed. My proudest moment was the teachers, most of the teachers. I'm, I'll, I'll get to that here in a minute, but they made it almost impossible, did they not, to get in some of those rooms? They were putting chairs up, and I told them, I said, guys, we're telling you not to fight. We don't want you to fight, because I'm not, I, I, you know, we don't want you to start fighting our armed guard, but other than that, whatever you would normally do. So if you would barricade the door, barricade the door. And so we had, we would come to doors, and the chairs would be propped up under there, so there was, with tables and desks stepped up, so there was, there was no way you were going to get in. Our PD couldn't even get into them. Like, like you said, I stopped them. They were about to break a door, and I was like, whoa, 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 let's not break it. This was real, we break it, but let's not break it. They knocked on one door, because we tell our people, when we do lockdown drills, we'll go knock on the door. Should you answer?
No.
No, you should not, but that's what we do. We go knock on a few of them to see if they'll answer. We knocked on one, but this was the PD. They had neutralized, and they're trying to see if there's anybody hurt in this room, but they can't get in because of the barricade. And they said, open the door. This is PD. And the answer was, well, if this is PD, you ought to be able to get in this room. And that's the best, that's a great answer, because I didn't want them to open the door, because it might not have been PD. The drill itself, 42 minutes, I think, from, I started it from the first gunshot, and I stopped it when Chief Peterson said, okay, I think it's a good place to end. We, we want to do this in segments. Today was like square one. Square two, I'd like to extend it a little further, and then square three, and I don't know if this is a year or two down the road, but at some point, I would like, like I said, to go all the way to reunification, where we have parents in the community practice coming to get their kids. Now, we want to be careful with some kids, because we don't want to necessarily advertise everything we do to prevent, because we, we just would like to keep our secrets close to the best in this day and age. But I was proud of them. I mean, there was a few things that we've got to go back and fix. When you have high school kids or middle school kids, you always pass by one room where you hear people, you know, talking or whatever, and other, I, I think we had one or two rooms with that, and so next time, what I'm probably gonna tell the shooter is, I want you to walk through the school, and if you hear noise inside a room, I want you to try to get in there. You don't hear noise, don't try to get in there. If you hear noise, I want you to try to get in there. Because I'd say 99% of our people took it very seriously. Boyd, would you like to add anything to that a little bit? You may still be tired.
No, I'm glad he gave us the opportunity. I've been asking for this for five years, and it happened. I just wanted a gun to be shot in school so they know.
It sounds totally different.
Totally different.
Inside those hallways.
He should know that. And I do need to get in shape, but I.
Mary, this bit that does not go in the paper.
Yeah, and, and I told her, she's been calling me all week, and I told her, I'm not telling you everything, but I was. I was proud, and I do think everybody, you guys even saw a lot of things you don't even think about, right? Because you, we can all sit there and say, what I would do in this situation, but until you're in that situation, you don't know what you would do in that situation. So we all did a lot of good, but there's so many things that we can fix and do better. But overall, I was, I was, anytime you get this many entities and you can pull something like that off, I was very appreciative. Reached out to everybody afterwards, to Chief Peterson, Lieutenant Garza, and the EMS, and just told them how much I appreciate how we were able to get this done, but it's a good step in the right direction to agree. Principals, I, I wanted y'all here for that. Did, did you have anything to add to it? We had, Mr. Carrera had to call 911. Mr. Coronado, when we actually called 911, it was going over the radios. I mean, it was as real as it could be without being real. Anything?
I think for us, it pointed out some areas of improvement, or even with the cameras or angles or things like that, that we can do to, to improve response. So it was, it was great. It was a good experience. So it was, it was great, it was a good experience.
It was, it was, it was closest real-life experience to that that I've ever had the privilege of being a part of. So I, I just wanted to brag on everybody involved. So now I'll jump down to the principals, and I'm gonna let these guys leave after this, but I do want to tell you, I'm very excited. I told them three to five minutes of telling y'all what their big picture, their vision of their, of their campus is this. And then you guys asked them questions if you would like to. You've met them all, I believe. We'll start with South. I want, um, I thought your kids would be here. Um, I appreciate Christie being here, because as an, as an interim, sometimes you're not, we, we talked before, you're not fully invested as an interim, but she, she asked if she could come tonight. So I very much appreciate you sticking around for this. So Coach Tipton, starting with you, sir.
Alright.
Richie, I just wanna ask one question. You know, of course, this was planned, so in, in the actual live, where is command center breathing?
It would depend on where the, today, we set it up out in the front of the old entrance. But we had that talk today about would it not be better to have it over on the new entrance where that, where that bus lane goes. But today, what we did was we set command center here, and when the EMS came, they transported the victims out on this, on this other side. But we had a command.
Now, moving forward, if that were to happen anytime soon, are we prepared as far as like the log boxes? I mean, have, do we have everything?
Working on it. Dr. Nelson will probably touch on that a little bit when he talks about the gates here in a minute, but we're getting there.
But I wanna be very careful not to give too much to the public.
Yes, no.
So if you guys ever want a full update, we can go in executive session, if law allows for that, because it's safely related, other than that, I'm gonna keep it very engineering.
But no, we made a lot of progress, and we're, we're getting there. Alright, Tip.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, President Gonzalez, Superintendent Richie, members of the board. Uh, I wanna thank all y'all for having me tonight. I just kind of wanted to briefly go over a little bit of what we've experienced. I, I kind of hit the ground running this summer. Um, I've got to meet most of you guys kind of in passing, I've not, a lot of conversation, but um, I just wanted to let you guys know how much I appreciate what you guys do. It's a tough job, I know it, and, uh, it's a lot of time and a lot of hours. So thank you for everything you do. Um, I'm very, very excited for the opportunity to introduce myself as a new principal at South. It's a new journey for me. Um, as a dedicated educator and passionate advocate for quality education, I truly am honored to be selected, um, and, and entrusted with the responsibility at South Elementary. Um, I, I'm truly honored to be selected, and, and, and really, it means a lot to me to be chosen for that position. So thank you guys for entrusting me. It's, it's a, it's a big responsibility, but I'm excited about it. It's a new transition in my life. I was, my dad was heartbroken when I told him. I've had two years, I'm, I've been a, a, a coach for fourteen, and, and I've been, two years this has been in the back of my mind, and I talked to Mr. Richie extensively. I said, I've gotta call my dad and tell him there's no more Coach Tipton's. And there's been ones since.
You're always coach, I'm still coach.
I did, and so he was, he was just like, man, we're getting, all our good coaches are getting out of the business. And I was like, well, this is still a business, because we're in the business for kids, and, and so I'm, I'm really grateful. Uh, just wanted to let you know, I'm, I'm committed to, uh, committed to fostering and nurturing an empowering learning environment that not only instills academic excellence, but also, um, is gonna cultivate character. Uh, and I, I believe that starts with modeling that for our kids. Um, I think that leadership, uh, and a sense of responsibility among our students is gonna be very important in what we do. And guided by a firm belief in the potential of each individual, I'm excited to collaborate with our exceptional faculty, staff, students, parents, and, and you guys, members of, of the board. So first thing I'd like to cover for my campus is enrollment, to give you guys an update on enrollment. And, uh, I kind of freaked out a little bit, because we pulled the numbers, and we accidentally had third grade in there. So my numbers were off from what I thought they were, and then we found the problem.
Thought you needed some more portables, some buildings?
Yes, so, uh, but we were good, we were good. So last year at South Elementary, our total enrollment was three hundred and three students at the end of the year. Currently, right now, um, our enrollment at South Elementary is three hundred and seventy-two students.
That's awesome. And we in here, that's great.
So we have, we have got growth, and we're expecting a lot more, um, a lot more to come in, so, um.
You might need a portable.
We might need some portables.
You got it, Tipton, you got it.
Uh, we've had an excellent round of professional development for both new teachers and returning staff. They've come in, um, really, really excited about the year. Uh, I know we had a tough year last year, and we had a tough week starting off with, with the Tele family. So, um, we, we had to address that and, and let our, our people know, you know, we're, we're here for us. I hated that we had to start off that way, but those guys have come in every day, excited about the trainings. They're, they're excited, they're in my office, I gotta line out the door, and I'm like, I've never had so many questions. They're like, oh, no, wait till you tie shoes. You're gonna tie more shoes than you got questions to eat. And the gum, and Richie's like, don't wear your nice new suit every day, because you'll be buying a lot of those, so. But I've been highly impressed with, with every employee, and, and, uh, I really think we've got a good foundation to build on there at South. Uh, together, I believe we can create an environment where every student thrives, every educator excels, and every member of the community feels proud to be, uh, a part of Lamisa ISD. And I'm glad to be here. I was here last year as a coach, as you guys know, and a science teacher. Um, and I, I believe in this man right here, and that's why I stayed, and I believe in what we're doing. And I think that we've got a great foundation at South to build and to be proud of. So am I gonna make mistakes? Absolutely. Like Richie Thomas said, you're not gonna have questions till you, you don't know you have questions. And they're gonna come up, and, and you're gonna have to, but, uh, you know, work through them. But I look forward to the opportunity to get to know you guys and share my ideas and, and value your feedback. I've got to hang out with these guys some, and, and you've got a great central office staff. I mean, they're, they're just, I've been around a lot of places, never been big in central office, but I, I would, I, I think these guys are great. Um, we had a great retreat. Um, and I wanna thank you for your time. I'm eager to get started, as all of us are, and, uh, ensure that South Elementary continues to be, um, a light for Lamisa. And I appreciate you guys having us tonight. And we're right around the corner, it's about to get started, and, um, all those little kids are gonna be running around, and my world's about to change a whole lot, so.
In a good way.
Yes. I've been worried about that too, yes, yes, so.
Thank you so much.
It does not go by, it's the traffic.
Yes.
Thank you for staying with us.
Absolutely.
And I'm excited to see what we're gonna bring to South. You are literally the foundation of these kids' education, and what they do here reflects all the way up to the graduates, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You call him the intimidator.
I know, that boy's gonna scare those little kids.
Good evening, all of you. Uh, we haven't had the chance to meet yet, and so I'll take that first opportunity when I get to. I don't stay this evening, um, but my name is Christie Griffin, and I'm, I'm excited to be here. Uh, this is my seventeenth year in education, and I, this opportunity came up, and just talking to Mr. Richie, and what his direction is, and what he's looking for, and how he believes in children, and how he believes in Lamisa ISD, it was a no-brainer to say yes to come on and, and help. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that. Um, I'm, have not been, I've only been around three through fifth grade with my own kids. So that's a new learning experience, but I can tell you that all of the grade levels that I've been at have been my favorites, so I'm looking forward to three through five to become my new favorite. But I've been so absolutely impressed by coming onto that North Campus. Um, they worked very hard to set up this year. We're fully staffed when I actually came on, which is every interim principal's dream, because that, that doesn't happen even when you're there all summer sometimes. So already, just the people that were there in place did a fabulous job, so I want to make sure to recognize them. Um, I'll give you the overview of what they have set up for this year, and where I kind of fit into that, and then how I plan to support that. Um, over the summer, their teacher team got together and wanted to come up with a way to make sure that they were supporting character traits with academic success. And so in order to do that, they are, we are implementing a house system this year. And our theme this year is Be the Storm. And I wanna share with you what Storm stands for. Um, the S stands for self-discipline. So our goal is to look at our students and help them build grit and perseverance to, to combat whatever comes up, whether it's a math problem, or a paragraph, whatever it may be. We want them to know that with a little bit of self-discipline, they can be successful in any and everything that they do. We want them to be thoughtful, that's the T, of themselves and others and their actions, and how they affect one another. Optimistic, we're looking for them to have a growth mindset, and know that wherever they are, improvement is, is, is the only option. So next is respectful, respect themselves and others, and then last, to be motivated, to build that self-efficacy and the belief in themselves that they can be successful. Um, one of the ways that this is also changing is the way that our third and fourth grade is aligned. We have had, uh, pairs of teachers, and this year, as the curriculum was aligned throughout the district, we also made it a split between three teachers instead of two. And what that does for us is it allows more time for a specific content and the teacher to teach that content. And so it really allows us to address math, and English, and science, um, more intentionally. So we're excited to have that as well. Um, our enrollment, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, did go down a little bit. Um, they ended last year with three hundred and thirty-four students, and this year, we're currently sitting at, um, two hundred and ninety-nine. So our largest classes are fifth graders at a hundred and nineteen, and our fourth grade is at eighty-seven. So from my understanding and just visiting, we had a large class leave and a small class come. And so the numbers just kind of worked out that way. Um, I can tell you that day one, when the teachers came in, and even today, uh, I went into our workroom, and I finally told them I had to leave, because they were making me feel guilty for standing there talking to them, because they were all in, all working on stuff. Their excitement is infectious, and walking down the halls just to check in, everybody is abuzz. They're ready to serve, and I'm really excited to be here to help. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
No, but I know you thanked us, but we thank you for coming and wanting to be a part of this.
Well, thanks for the opportunity, I'm excited to be here.
Before Jasper comes up, y'all remember the update where I talked about me falling during the interview?
Oh, yeah.
That interview, right there.
Oh, man.
Nelson doesn't know about it, he's looking at me like, I gotta know this story.
Was it a hard fall?
Oh, it was, and I didn't say anything.
You didn't laugh?
No, no, it was, I couldn't really tell his reaction. I couldn't really tell with his reaction, like I thought, should you check? You might, you might actually be bleeding. It really was, you get that tablet and fell, face first.
I was up like that, April.
You, you don't know what he's saying.
I'm, I was up, I'm good, I'm an athlete, Rebecca.
You just bounced like that.
I just wanna know how hard she laughed.
Oh, I'm sure she, I'm sure she called her friends, but you didn't, you didn't.
Probably offered me a job.
And she accepted, man.
Well, I'm Melanie Jasper, and I thank y'all for allowing me to come back again this year. I'm still really excited and I'm so honored and blessed to be here, and, um, I wanna stay here forever. Last year.
You're the senior principal.
I am.
That's what I told her, she's a vet.
Yes, that's kind of intimidating and scary, but it feels good at the same time. Um, last year, our enrollment was three hundred and ninety-eight, and right now, we have three hundred and forty-four. And I really think that's gonna jump up, because a lot of parents, they don't have access to technology. So with us having an open enrollment, they'll come in and do those things. Um, again, I'm just very excited, I'm excited for what the year has to bring. It's been really refreshing. Um, our campus is not fully staffed, I have one position that I need in ICIS, but, but we're gonna get there, hopefully.
Hopefully we won't be like.
We're not gonna need ICIS.
Middle school, middle class.
That would be too wishful. Um, we did hire some really great teachers, y'all. Um, some of them are brand-new teachers, but, man, I was laughing the other day, because you know, I remember being a new teacher, and how excited you are to get in that classroom, and I was thinking, whoa. But to see them so fired up and just alive with everything that's going on, I love that, because, um, they're just super excited, they're intentional with everything they're doing. I was able to look at some lesson plans today, and they're on point. And they're excited, and they feel very supported, because they're ready to go, because of all the support system that Ms. Baumann put in place with their new teacher orientation. They feel ready to go, everything that she gave them. They, they don't have a lot of questions on what to do, they feel that they're prepared and ready, and they're excited. And the most important thing is knowing that they have that support, they feel confident. And that's a big thing, because I know my first year, nobody helped me. I, I didn't even know how to write a lesson plan. So I mean, I think that what we have going here, we're on the right path to see academic achievement. We're on the right path to see retention with employees. I mean, everything that we're doing is lining out right, and that's because of, we have great leadership, and we have you guys to support that. Um, our staff, all of our staff, we met on Monday, and it was really refreshing to see them come in, and I also had some, um, good feedback from them there. They loved the breakout sessions, they loved the hands-on sessions, and some of them were student, are teacher-led sessions. And they really enjoyed that, they felt that they were very informative, and that they're better prepared on how to do things, and they learned new, new tips and tricks to implement in their classroom by seeing what other people do, which is good. Um, we have Meet the Teacher coming up on, uh, August fourteenth from four to six. We're gonna do a come and go session. If y'all came last year, we're gonna do it the same way we did it last year, where everybody's in the gym, but they can go around and walk their schedule. Um, I'm really, really excited for the direction that we're moving. Um, I, I feel like I have a hundred percent teacher buy-in from, from my vision and my goal. Um, I ask them to commit, you know, to giving us, a hundred percent's not realistic, y'all. I mean, on a day-to-day thing, we wear a lot of hats, and I ask them to commit to eighty percent, because if we go up eighty percent on everything that we do, our test scores are gonna improve, the students are gonna achieve more. If we're pushing on, and we're being more rigorous and intentional with what we're doing, it's just gonna be a win-win. You know, and then we'll just keep soaring from there, and that, that's my goal and plan for this year, honestly. And, um, having a student, you know, led organizations, I've talked to a lot about that. Those things are taking off, and I'm super excited about that, and, and the support that you guys give us for that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Carrera.
Good evening, Madam President Gonzalez, Superintendent Richie, and members of the school board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak for you. I'm very excited about being here at Lamisa. Uh, it's been a great week. Give you a few numbers. Uh, for the two thousand twenty-three, we ended up with four hundred and eighty students. And as of today, we've enrolled four hundred and eighty-six.
Oh, yes.
And we're gonna have a few more to, I'm looking at probably four, nine, or so, that we get enrolled. Um, as the, my coworkers here talked about professional development, we had professional development the last few days. They were really willing, well, I, I walked into a few of them, and, uh, teachers were engaged and really asking good questions. Um, I want to thank Richie for his leadership and your staff here for the, putting that professional development together. That's a good start for us to, to see that the teachers can see that we have the support of central office, that they're gonna lead the charge, and, and we're gonna take that, the time from them and move forward and make great gains. Uh, I believe we have, we had a strong start to our two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and I'm expecting a great year. Some of the things that, that have amazed me is that, uh, when I gave my presentation on Monday, uh, the teachers were just attentive. I was impressed that they were attentive. And I think our teachers are hungry to have some winning and some success, and I think that they're ready for it, they're ready for the challenge. My main goal for this year is really to get our staff to be, to build those relationships with kids, because I think that once you build those relationships with our kids, they'll do anything for you. And I think that's the number-one thing, and then as we build those relationships, I think that they'll commit to the curriculum instruction that goes in the classroom. And so I'm looking forward for this year that we make some great gains. And last but not least, I, I'd like to thank the support for championing, for all students and staff, because if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have the things that we have today, and I appreciate it. And I've been at several districts and really impressed with, with this campus. And I've met a few kids, and I met, I don't know all the staff yet, but I'm getting to know them, and, um, I sense a urgency that they're ready to get busy and get to educating our kids. And they all count. Do you have any questions?
Are you fully staffed?
There's a, we went on a, we lack a, a math for algebra one and geometry, uh, but we're gonna use the, uh, internet with that with the facilitator.
It's something we're gonna talk about in a minute.
Right, yeah. You know, we looked every day at the, the applicants and just. You know, we looked every day at the applicants and just everybody's, I guess everybody's looking for staff, you know. Place I came for, came from, they have like 50 teachers that they still lack that they're starting to take the year out. And so I feel very fortunate. Therefore, man, I thought, oh no. We had more than that, but we were able to combine some biology classes to get a certified teacher in there. And so I was glad since that's one of our tested DOCs and so I was glad to get strong teachers too who were in there, so I'm excited about that.
I don't know. I don't know if it was, you weren't in the military, right? Where you mentioned about, cause my daughter saw you that other day and I said, that's who else? Principal? And she was like, is he in the service? Was he in the service? And I said, I said, yeah, he was in military. I said, and if y'all behave, I said, you'll make me drop a D20. And she was like, can you do that? He's a principal, he can do whatever.
I get that all the time. They can come, some kids didn't think that other campuses that I'm undercover. You know, careful, you're undercover. We're not gonna say that.
I'm excited for you to get to know our kids and, and know that just as much as they need structure, they need a love and for them to also know that we have a, we have kids that come from a variety of backgrounds. We need to, to have the support and love to know that no matter where they come from, they will succeed, they can succeed.
They will succeed. And so I, when I had an interview with Richie and we had that conversation, I told him my, my, my biggest charge is that when I grew up, my parents only spoke Spanish. And so when I went to school, it was, it was hard for me because I, I thought the building itself, when I entered, that I would learn English automatically, just walk in and English would come to, but it wasn't that way. And so, and I don't think it was done purposefully, but I would just put aside to color and stuff and I so eagerly wanted to read, I wanted to learn how to read and do math and all that stuff. And so when I became a principal, I said, you know, nobody in my watch is gonna fall through the cracks, that every kid is gonna know that they're important, no matter where their reading level is, we'll take them from where they're at and improve every year. And I don't care if it's a 5% or 10% gain, as long as we're gaining, we're gonna celebrate that student that, hey, don't worry, we're gonna get there, it's just, it's gonna take some time. It didn't take, you didn't get here overnight, it's just gonna take some time. I think once, like I said, when you build that relationship, they're gonna really, really shine and know that they can come to us. And the staff, what I brought to the staff is that I've told the staff that, you know, when we go to meetings, like we'll have the meeting, instead of trying to whistle or to get their attention, I did that the first time, but after I explained to them, I told them that what, to get their attention, I'm gonna say.
Hard work.
Blue, blank, hard work and they say pays off. And so when I went in there, I said, hard work and then about five or 10 said pays off. And I said again, hard work and it pays off. And the third time I said, hard work and everybody was in, pays off. And so I think they've taken into that and I told them, be ready to get out the year. That's what I'm gonna say when I come by you and I'm gonna say, hard work. And I want the kids to do that too, so that, we want them to know that we're working hard every day for them to succeed and be great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Principals, thank you guys.
Yes.
Y'all can head out. I appreciate y'all being here tonight.
Y'all have a good evening.
Y'all wanna say?
Y'all are welcome too.
We have plenty of me, no.
Okay, Mr. Norris, if you wanna start making your way up here. I don't know, do you have anything you need me to hand out for you? I'll pass that around to you. A lot, and I think Mr. Norris will go into it, but a lot of his stuff, like everything, it's, it's still kind of in flux, so.
Does he know he only gets two minutes?
Do what?
You wanna get two minutes?
Have the talk already started? Okay, then I need to start now.
Thank you, Mr. Richie. And as always, thank the board very much. I believe I ended it up before I came and this is my 26th year doing this. Very much appreciate this relationship and appreciate your, your trust in me. I will tell you that you're not gonna remember this, but there were a lot of things going on last year when we did our renewal. I don't know whether you remember that or not, but during my presentation last year, I indicated that something like this was coming and it is here. So I've got two sheets in front of you. One is a Word document with basically all of the market considerations. I'm giving you more information this year because if you'll see by the spreadsheet, our insurance premiums on our property and casualty and our workers' comp basically doubled. And you are looking at it correctly. There are several factors driving this. The main one, number one, is that your insurance values went from 127 million dollars in a TIV. TIV stands for total insurance valuation to 157 million. All your buildings are complete, you have a full schedule of not only complete new buildings, i.e. the gym, the football stadium, those things, but also fully remodeled buildings as well. Anytime you build new and you have remodel, that means it drives your replacement cost on those buildings up. So this is a byproduct of having new buildings. Also, you're coming out of a three-year rate cap guarantee, which simply means that you had a 22 cent per thousand rate with your property and casualty carrier. They call themselves PCAP, by the way. All of these insurance pools I'm gonna be talking tonight have a, have a, letters to them. Yours is PCAP, the renewal that you have is with PCAP. That stands for Property and Casualty Association of Texas. So it's gone from a 22 cent rate to a 34 cent rate. But again, the main thing driving all of this is inflation and supply chain issues. Just like when we were trying to finish the gym, everything costs more, right? Y'all were very familiar with that. This is what happens, and this is not a political soapbox, these, these are just facts. This is what happens when you shut down the country for 18 months and you shut down your supply chain and you put everything on pause. This will probably play out over the next three to four years. I, I am a hopeful, optimistic, prayerful man and I just hope that there, this is not the new normal. Because if it is the new normal, I'm not sure that school districts, hospital districts, counties, cities can afford what's coming next. So I, I'm hoping that this calms down at some point. I will tell you that with this presentation, with this renewal, you'll have a new rate cap guarantee at 34 cents because all of the other quotes and all the other proposals that I see coming from school districts like Tasby, other, other pools like Tasby, and the other one is Pete, used to be with Pete, their Public Educators Association of Texas, they're in the 40 cent range, 40 cent per thousand. So the 40, 34 cent that you have in, in this renewal is actually good. So I'm not sure that it's going to get better, I will tell you that. Again, it's a byproduct of having a brand new, larger property schedule is the main thing. And it hasn't hit us until now. And part of that is me being a little tricky with PCAP is going, yeah, that's not quite finished yet, that's not quite finished yet. Yeah, we have the keys on that, but you know, the football stadium, there's a lot of things there that you can insure, you know, like land. But when the gym hit and, and we were done with our construction project, one of the very first thing to do is come back and revalue you as well. They run every property through a cost estimator software and that cost estimator, cost estimator software, you know, didn't just pick up the new stuff, it picked up all the other campuses, including the middle school, which is, you know, freshly remodeled. I wanted to touch just a little bit on the claim, that's a little bit of old news, but Ron and myself have been able to get another roughly $400,000 out of that claim. When Ron came on board, I will tell you, Mr. McBee, I'm sorry, Mr. McBee came on board, he and I, he allowed me to interject myself into that claim, which I was not allowed to do before. And so we immediately cleared up another 400,000. The total on that claim is about 1.8 million. So I, I believe that there were two and three million dollar numbers thrown around, that just, that was not accurate, wasn't accurate to begin with. So we've got all of what we would call our non-replacement cost estimates and what we have to do now, what we have to do now is go back and apply for replacement cost. There'll be, there'll, there'll be a second check on the roofs, the other repairs we're not exactly sure about. I think that you know that a lot of those repairs were done in-house and we simply did not have the documentation that we needed and probably don't have that documentation that we needed.
And is that what, that might hurt us? Does that hurt us because we don't have the documentation?
Well, you have the 1.4 for sure, it's already in your bank account. Getting the other 400,000, we may or may not get. We'll get a portion of it. Being able to prove what all of that was spent on is going to prove to be very difficult, I would imagine. So, not saying that politically correct enough? Okay. It, it, that just is what it is. Typically when a claim happens, I'm there in the beginning and just kind of moving all the parties along and, and keeping track of things and making sure that it's running fairly smoothly. And I, I was just never, from the beginning, involved in that process, so.
Did they know you could be?
Yes, he met with me early and one of the first things he told me was he has not been involved, so we immediately, we immediately got him involved.
Yes. So, but we will get a portion of that. And so, and the other truth is, is that quite frankly, a lot of things that were claimed were being remodeled. So there's not a tremendous amount of financial loss from the district that I can even estimate on this. We, we got, we got new roofs where we needed new roofs, we remodeled the middle school in essence where we needed to remodel the middle school. There were just so many crazy things involved in that, that could be another session, so.
We did pretty, pretty well. I think we did pretty well.
That, that is correct. There is not a tremendous amount of financial loss from the district standpoint, so. And the insurance company, I'm just gonna tell you, PCAP was great. They paid, they paid one, they paid a million dollars of that without having proper documentation. I'll tell you that right now. The last 400,000, they finally said, you have to send us this. We said, okay, we got it together for them, so. And then again, the second page is just more than you wanna know about market conditions right now. I will tell you of the other entities that I consult for, this is happening everywhere with every single pool, whether it's TAC at the county, TML at the city, the, the hospital district is with a pool that is, the exact same thing is happening. So again, I hope at some point something normalizes here. Let me check my notes to see if there's anything.
Is there like a timeline by when we will know if we will get the?
Pardon me?
Is there like a deadline or a timeline before we know if we're even gonna get that?
So we will enter a new, in a local agreement, we will enter a new three-year rate cap guarantee on your property, also your workers' comp as well. That will have a new three-year rate guarantee. Really, this is for presentation, all you have to do is accept the renewal. Truthfully, in the past, we've always had board motions on that. I don't really think that that's necessary. This is accepting a renewal. If we were moving to another carrier or doing something completely different, that's one thing, but basically we're accepting the renewal.
Am I, am I right to say that people are staying away from school districts right now?
Yes.
Like they won't touch school districts anymore?
No, so I'll give you an example. A non-pool company like Travelers, Travelers has their whole public sector, everybody's heard of Travelers, right? They have their whole pub, public sector division, which is kind of funny because they don't accept any public sector business anymore. I can't get a quote for the county and they insured the county for years and years, can't get a quote. They are actually on the hospital district now, but that's again, it's a pooled where they have 48 different hospital districts. So no, Tasby, Tasby's a good partner, right? Here's what they do, they don't ever actually decline us, they just send me an email that says, wow, you've had some big losses and we're offering very few quotes this year. That's not a declination, but you send them everything and I sent them your renewals. I, I, I'll send anybody a renewal if I think I can get a better deal somewhere. Just absolutely, completely don't even respond. Pete, who you were with before, they were very nice and they did decline via email. And Texas Political Subdivision is the other pool network that does this, no response. So, yeah, it's a very limited, very hard market, not like anything I've ever seen in my 29 years of doing this. I've never seen anything like this before. So again, I can only hope that it normalizes and stabilizes somewhat, so.
And a lot of this has been softened because that man right there had already, like I told you on those updates, he's, he's thinking ahead and he, he might not have got the whole, but he had already got a chunk of his account before because he had a feeling something might happen. So good job on you, Mr. Richie.
Yeah, Mr. McBee and I had had several conversations and he knew that there were increases coming. I was not prepared for this, I'll be very frank with you. The 1.8 million dollar loss is the biggest, you know, that's the biggest driver of it, so. Questions? Yes. We had, we had a great meeting going until I showed up, I realized that.
We've had way worse news than this.
Oh, yeah.
Way worse.
Hey, on another note, I have, there is, there is coverage, there is active shooter coverage, but let me tell you what that coverage basically gives you, media help. What it doesn't really do for you is what you just did today, which is something, I, I wish that I had consulted with SRO Williams sooner because I've been, I've been begging for drills like this. And I, I had no idea that he was as well.
Boy.
Boy, I'm sorry. I'm thanking Officer Williams at the PD, I apologize. Sorry.
The toddler.
The toddler.
Yes, yes. Anyway.
All right. He's not gonna wanna come help anymore.
All three of y'all.
Thank you, I'll be sitting down now and not saying anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, very much.
Any questions?
Now, Chris.
Mr. Norris.
I'm sorry. Mr. McBee did tell me that with this increase on the premiums that you had offered the way your consulting fees.
No, there is not a. I'm sorry, I missed. I will say this, I did not, I did not increase. This is, I did not ask for an increase. Thank y'all, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, moving, moving on through here, Dr. Nelson's about to come up and he's up here for several things in a row. He has attachments for all of these things ready to rock and roll. The first one is gonna answer a question y'all asked earlier because it's kind of the safety, security, talking about the gate, so. Dr. Nelson, the floor is yours.
Thanks, sir. Madam President, board members, Mr. Richie, colleagues. Tonight, as I said, I have four items, so I'll pause between each one, you know, questions if you can let me know when you're ready to go to the next one. The first one, of course, as you have on board, book addresses, the quote that I will ask you to approve later tonight relative to the fencing and gate modifications for our safety standards. As you know, the Texas law and updated safety standards allow us to utilize fences and gates as a method of mediation. It's kind of ironic, I'm talking about that on this day, but it kind of brings it into perspective because we could, they could give us a billion dollars and we could not guarantee no one could ever get into our buildings, but what, what our job is to do is to slow them down to allow police to respond. By being in the building today, police responded within about two, two and a half minutes.
The police got there in about two minutes and 30 seconds. Now, our, our two guys were there quick, but the PD was about two and a half. Eo Mess was a little slower than.
You were already there.
But we think there may have been something with the dispatch because after the first two nine-one calls, we did switch off to another channel, so we think there may have been a mix-up on that.
So everything we do is to slow down any potential intruder. If we can slow them down with gates and fences, that's the first step. And then after that, we wanna slow them down with other mediation. And I, I'm sorry for being kind of vague when I talk about this in public, but if you ever wanna know every detail, if you, if you wanna have an executive session, I can give you more details. We just wanna be very careful. The first one you voted for, I think it was last month, that work will be done in November. We're on the calendar to get that work done, started in November. It may take about four weeks to do all of that work, but I talked to the vendor, the contractor in there, putting this on the schedule, hopefully early November, so it can be finished before Christmas break for sure. This one, Mr. Allen, the bid that we're asking you to vote on, I did seek multiple bids, I did receive four bids. One of them was incomplete, so we had three bids that we could really look at. This was not the low bid, I'll tell you that. The low bid came in, but I questioned, and so did Mr. Richie, we questioned that vendor's ability to match what we, what we have now. Fortunately, Mr. Allen Ashley put in. Fortunately, Mr. Allen Ashley put in the fencing and gates that you see, and so, the way, the way we kind of talked about it, if he gets to a part and he's putting in the new gate and the fence is rotting where he needs to connect it, he's not going to charge you section because that's his work. And so, we just felt better about the quality of his work because we could see it and feel it, and it's been excellent. So, we thought that we would ask you to approve the bid that is the middle bid. One bid was almost twice as much as the lowest bid and we just couldn't understand that, but we do think it's a good bid. All of this would be paid for by the 2022, 2022 through 2025 school form of safety grants, so it's not local monies that's paying for that. Me and Mr. Ritchie were also laughing one day, not laughing, but we were pretty excited in the car. When we originally got the bid, we thought that the first project you voted on would take all of that money and then.
I thought that money, I thought the film would take all 200,000 of it. To think we're now getting fences and other stuff, I, I can't explain how happy I am.
Yeah, it's, it's exciting. If you approve tonight, the grant, sorry, the quote that we recommended, we will still have up until about 70-plus thousand dollars remaining to do the other things. You asked about one of them tonight, about the boxes. I am expecting a quote on the boxes soon.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Also, we're expecting a quote soon on radio communications, and we're also expecting a quote on the building numbering. Once we do the building numbering, the last quote, fences and the, and the gates and the boxes, we will be in full compliance. And so, the last estimated about 25 or 30,000 dollars, we can use for other things, so pretty excited about all of that. So, that's, that, do you have any questions related to that recommendation? Good. All right. Want me to go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
All right. The second thing, I do need to pass out something to you guys because I, I have a, oh, I'm so sorry. I was supposed to pass this out for this item. This is the correct, so when you vote, you're actually voting on the correct version, you'll notice at the bottom, it, it said the last, it says windows, and it's just an error on my old mind, so.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
This one would be the one that we will ask Burnett to replace in the official board packet, and then you can use, when you vote, you'd be voting on this one, not the other.
I could ask if I was actually doing the K-10 film.
No, sir. No, sir. I, that was, I noticed that mistake after it was too late, but I had already done her work, so I didn't want to do it. I just thought that this was spice, so thank you for that. The second item on the agenda is, that we, you will vote on later tonight, is hopefully to approve the student code of conduct. So, as you know, if you served on the board prior to this, state law does require that school boards adopt and publicize a student code of conduct every year. The way it works is Tasby is one of the organizations that, that creates a code of conduct, and many school districts adopt Tasby's. What the code of conduct does is spells out the consequences for major disciplinary infractions, most of them from chapter 37 of the Texas Penal Code. So, Tasby has put together a, a document, and then what we do is we, we add the local options. None of those local options have changed from last year, so whatever has been the practice to do the way we do things in Lamisa continue. There were no changes to that. There were a total of 10 changes by Tasby, mostly related to change, changes in the law. So, after legislative session, sometimes they'll switch from House Bill 22 to Senate Bill 6 to address a particular behavior. This year, House Bill 114, House Bill 567, Senate Bill 37, House Bill 392 were the major laws that were, were passed in the most recent legislation that caused Tasby to say, "Let's update the codes of conduct to match that." And so, you can see those in here as you turn through pages, it will tell you when one of those laws is now guiding what's happening in the code of conduct. And I do have a list, and if you want, I can email you every page that has a change and what bill is the new bill. And, and I just think what I'll do tomorrow is keep this on my desk, I'll send you an email saying, "In the code of conduct here, the things that changed, just for giggles." I mean, you really don't need it unless you want to look up those laws, but I make that available to you. Allowing administration to make grammatical changes is something that I'm also asking you to vote for. Sometimes we find errors like, like the fills and window error, and so, if you approve it as is, if I changed an "and" and a "but," I'd really need you to vote on that for it to be official. But if you allow grammatical corrections going forward, if I made any, as we discovered them, then we can correct those and not have to come back to the board, so that's kind of the recommendation we're making for tonight. Any questions about that?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. The next item, and I'm going to ask Ms. Baumann to come on up because.
I may chime in on this a little bit, too.
We partnered on this, it's, it's, some places see it as a, as a human resources concern, some places see it as a curriculum concern. I'm used to seeing it as both because it has aspects of both, so. What, third item that we're presenting tonight is a request that we hope you will pass that will allow us to partner with Proximity Learning. They're called PLI, Proximity Learning Incorporated. That partnership would enable us to use them for virtual instruction. As Mr. Carrera mentioned, two courses at Lamisa High School were not filled with a, with a certified teacher.
Yet.
Yet.
No, because that matters.
That was just.
Because that matters with one of the reasons you're going to, you're going to talk about here in a minute.
It, it matters. I'm sorry, y'all, sometimes I joke and I shouldn't. It matters, it matters a lot. I, I'm on joke. It matters a lot. The reason it matters is we have used Elevate in the past, and Ms. Baumann was, when she heard these two aspects are the reason we want to switch companies, she was like, "I like that. I like both of those reasons, let's use the new company." And I'm kind of like, "If it's working, don't change." And Elevate was working, but, Ms. Baumann explained those two reasons.
And, the first one has to do with the curriculum they let us use. So, Elevate, you had to use theirs, you had to follow their scope and sequence. And so, what happened last year, which kind of leads into reason two, when we did find a teacher that could come in and fill that spot, the transition did not go easily because it wasn't the same stuff we have. Proximity will use the stuff that we have purchased, our scope and sequence, so that when hopefully we do find somebody, they can come in and pick up. They'll follow Teach Resource Systems' scope and sequence, and they'll use the stuff that we just purchased for Algebra II and Geometry. So, that's a big one for me when we were working on the alignment, so that hopefully, reason number two, if we do find somebody, there's a way that you can.
End it.
End the contract without being penalized, I guess you would say. Elevate, we, I mean, we got no money back, you got nothing to go with them when we did find somebody. This one, you give a 30-day notice and you're good.
So, last year, an example of this would be, we had, our junior English for the first semester had to be taught by Elevate. That means, that's a live instructor, it's a real instructor, and then you have a facilitator in the room. We were able to find an English teacher at Christmas, a real one. All right, so we did away with the program, but we had to keep paying for it. So, that's reason two. But reason one, that teacher came in and she had to then adjust all of the stuff they had been doing to match up with our kids so they knew where we were in relevance to all the other curriculums, if that kind of makes sense. Slow them down.
I'll say that with these, I do feel better because these are not EOC-tested areas, and last year, we did have to use Elevate for an EOC-tested, or for a STAR-tested area. So, I, I think that we'll have, now that we know how to work it and we have our stuff going a little bit more, and it won't be as detrimental to our kids in, in areas like that for their EOCs because it'll be Algebra II and Geometry. The facilitators that we're going to have in there went through the training yesterday for the program we're going to be using, so that they will be able to offer the support in the classroom while the teacher is teaching it, so we're going to have them go through all of our training as well. But the fact that they were willing to use our stuff and give us the opportunity that when we do find a teacher to make that transition was huge for me, so.
Can I add three quick things because I think it has to be on the record. Mr. Ritchie supports it. We want a certified teacher, that's the first thing, in every class. We now have a, what, and you have had for a while, a good program, what I'm calling a, and it's a word, alternatively-qualified teacher, which is a facilitator. They're not certified, but they're alternatively-qualified through DOI. When we don't have either one of those, then we go to something like this, and I've used Proximity before in the past. I didn't push them because of that relationship. I wanted to be very clear, I'm not trying to push a company on you guys, or on us now, but they, they do, they do a very good job once they get started, and, and I'm looking forward to them serving us. The other thing I wanted to say is, our original vacancy was the EOC-tested area, but when everybody talked, said, "We don't want to do that again," so a teacher was shifted from Algebra II to Algebra I, or Geometry to Algebra I, I don't remember which one.
She was Algebra II.
She was Algebra II to Algebra I because kids take the EOC, it's better to have our teacher in the classroom, so that's kind of where we, with that recommendation. Do you guys have any questions about that?
No.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Ms. Baumann.
And the final thing, that later you will vote on, is our recommendation for you to approve the 2023-2024 compensation plan, including a supplemental pay plan. And I know you guys have been perusing the materials, and so I'll just simply ask, do you have any questions about that? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for all y'all hardworking, coming out, especially Mr. Ritchie, too, with his ideas and.
Got tons of them.
Thank you guys.
What'd you say?
You already got ten of us.
Ah, come on. Y'all, those updates are starting to wear on y'all. Budget and tax rate hearing, guys, I know Mr. Mann had a question about that, and I think he followed up with both Mr. Teltum and Mr. Mann. We've been hammering away at the compensation plan, but he's had, Ron's had this, this in kind of brewing as well. If you want to, are we good for August 24th, first of all, which would not be next Thursday, but the next Thursday, to have our budget and tax rate hearing?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. That's, it should be a short one, that should be a pretty quick meeting right there. Thursday, August 24th. Ron, do you want to add anything to that briefly?
Well, the, the interesting thing about all this is that the, the tax rate, our, our gross state funds have already been, and local have already been pretty much established. The challenge is falling into property values, assuring that we're in compliance with the, any current state law changes so that when we do the template, it, it's going to kick out the same numbers. It's just words kicking in out based on our property values and, and the ROBAC, and just some of the legal factors that's really not going to change, except what we collect for taxes, it's actually going to go down because of the change in the Homestead, Homestead Act. So, we're going to see a decrease in our M&amp;O, we'll probably see a little increase in our INS. I think that, I, I feel like I'm pretty set with it. I've spent time with, talking to Region 15, a person that helps us, Henry Gearing, and then also Dr. Carr, and, and right now, I've got everything that I ran through Dr. Carr, I just got it yesterday, so I'm trying to get through that. And, and I, I perused it right away and then I saw that most of it was very small, but I want to make sure, I do have a few questions out, but I really think that it's still not going to, those small changes won't affect what we're looking at for our taxes. The only thing that we start watching after this is the, the average debt attendance in the student population, to make sure that we don't see any real changes and what they may do in our filters. So, our next step, once we get through the August 24th meeting, would, for me, would be to start watching our, because we'll have our tax rate set, we'll have our budget set, and the key is now to start watching the budget, first of all, any loss of revenue or increase in revenue, either based on October or in, or current enrollment. I wrote all those numbers down thinking, "It looks like we're a little bit of a head, a little ahead with what I use for estimates for, for our student population." Today, we're 17 students ahead of what I use, and that's.
More students, more money. When I heard those in Roman numbers, I, I got excited because I think more so go up a little, but that high school may push by 100 in that.
So, my budget that I did, that I'm doing for 2023 is less than by 17 students, so.
That's it.
Of course, you still got to factor in attendance, but, but I think our attendance is held well for several years, so it should be consistent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, there's no legislative overview because it's pretty much been froze till October. It is, it's no changes. We talked about what I think is going to kind of happen back there in executive session. I, I am going to breeze through and I promise I'm going to go fast. The district, this, the, the goals that I kind of emailed you or sent in my update last night because I, I'm very passionate about if we do these five things, where it will propel us. And I just quickly, you know, goal number one is always curriculum-based because academics has got to be at the forefront of what we're doing right now. And she kind of touched on it, the principals kind of touched on it. We've revamped the whole thing, the whole thing, and it's not going to, I take that back. I do think we'll see results overnight, I just think the bid results, it's going to take a little bit to get. Our, our deal now, we spent time today going just, we're literally going through every single teacher, and it ties to our goal number two, which is recruitment and retention, where I feel like administrators have failed and, was it Jasper that said her first year teaching, she had no support? That's when you lose people, and you know that from being at the home of a principal. We have, we have them on the board and we have some really good new teachers. If y'all are able to come to the service club next Tuesday, you'll meet them. And I told her, I said, "They're, they want to do well, they are all bought in, so now it's just as much our responsibility as their responsibility that they succeed." And we are going to bend over backwards to get in there and make sure that they are supported in whatever ways they need. Grow your own, Mr. Mann, you mentioned that last night, that's something that I think, and I talked to, I say SROs at the bottom of that, I've visited with Officer Roche, I am exploring ways we can kind of turn ourselves into our own teacher factory and our own SRO factory, using Dora's Law Enforcement and then turning that back around. There's, there are some schools that help kids finance even their college because they sign a contract, they'll come back and work for five, six years, you know, so I'm exploring ways to make it much better. Goal three is the one that I feel like we've seen the most change in because you can change culture really fast, but culture has to be real because it'll flip right back the other way if it's fake. That's why I got to be me, because if I'm trying to be somebody else, you, you can't pretend, but I do feel like culture starts right here with this guy right here, the example I set every day, and then it trickles to him and him and her, and then it trickles to campuses and the principals and APs, custodians, and it's in the hallways, and it's just got to be real, which that is one thing I am, is a very real person. And so, we will leave an example on that. Safety, this day and age has to be a goal, and I feel like we've, just the drill today, we've talked a lot about, I think that's a big step in the right direction, but that's not the only step. A lot of things we got to do to keep our kids safe. And goal number five, CTE, if you don't have CTE goals in this day and age, you're going to mess up your kids and you're going to mess up your finances, but I, I think that I want to make sure, we in Lamisa, we have been so proud of our CTE program and we should be. I don't want to forget, we still got some kids, we got to make sure we get ready to go to college, the ACTs and the SATs, I want to make sure that we are, as Israel Carrera said, all our kids. Nobody falls through the trap, the cracks, and we find a way to make sure we have all of them successful. So, did y'all have any questions over those, I mean, do we feel like that's a pretty good place to be pushing ourselves?
Yep.
Okay. I believe, Ms. Gonzalez, we are down to the board action items.
Okay. Okay, now we'll go into other board action and non-action items. First one we have is deliberation and possible actions to approve the quote by Allen Ashley to provide security windows, that applies with the Texas law updated safety standards.
It's not sealed, right?
That's good.
Use the second memo I gave you.
Oh, sorry.
Remember I made that error?
Where's?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Right here.
The very bottom, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, the very bottom.
We're changing, you're taking off.
Okay, so just read that.
Read the new.
Oh, okay, just read that, okay. So, the, first one is approval of quote by Ashley, Allen Ashley welding to provide fencing gate additions and modifications and comply with the Texas law and the very safety standards.
Perfect. I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1756.54] Motion carries five to zero. Next is deliberation and possible action to approve 2023, 2024 student code of conduct as presented while allowing administration to potentially make grammatical revisions as needed with no change to concepts or to content of the code of conduct.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next is the deliberation and possible action to approve the partnership with the Proximity Learning Incorporated to provide virtual instruction for two courses at Lamisa High School for the year for 2023, 2024 school year.
Make a motion, we attempt as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, deliberation and possible action to approve the 2023, 2024 compensation plan and supplementing the pay recognition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Last is deliberation and possible action to accept the bid of the property located at 805 Northeast Fourth.
Ms. Gonzalez, I, I should have mentioned this up there. This is one of those things that's new to me, but not to you guys that have been on the board before. And basically it means that we're able to, going to collect, we're going to be able to collect taxes on a property that we haven't been able to collect taxes on before. So that's the gist of it.
Make a motion, we attempt as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Any other business news? Okay, there being no further business to come before the board this meeting is adjourned at 7:31.
There's lots of need, love.